Pastor Harrell, Councilmember Brewster. Dr. Welcome everyone here tonight to our June meeting on behalf of the council staff. It's good to see everyone here tonight. Tennessee law gives every Tennessean the right to attend city council meetings and to observe how their government is doing business. We appreciate that you took time out of your schedule to be here tonight. In order to conduct efficient, businesslike meetings, we've adopted specific rules to follow. These rules are designed to help keep the meeting moving, ensure that all points of view are heard and considered, and provide for common courtesy. In a moment, on the agenda, we'll cover citizens' input. That's where anyone wishing to address the council is encouraged to do so. Please wait until you've been recognized, come to the podium and state your name for the records. Also, please address all your questions to me as the mayor. And please avoid use of improper language, profanity, and inappropriate conduct. Once this portion of the meeting is over, the council will proceed with the other items on the agenda, but be advised that public comments will be limited. As everyone member, we're doing the people's business here tonight. It's a very important responsibility for all of us that we take seriously. Please adhere to these rules that we've established and I'm welcome to begin our meeting tonight. So with that being said, next item on the agenda is citizens' input. Time for anyone that wants to address the council about any matter, let's come forward. If you have to come up to the podium, please.
We know you've been stationed there.
Yes, my name is Dennis Stewart. Hey, first thing I want to say is I thank y'all for your service to our community and I respect the job that y'all do. I'm even hesitant to bring this up because this is one of those things I wished I'd brought up more when I was on council. I've mentioned it to Mayor Grayaway and a couple of times at city council meetings. I wished I did more, so I'm not really putting it in my... I'm just saying a suggestion I wanted to throw out there. The other night when we were having a meeting about the trash stuff and all that, all that came up. When all that came up, you know, a couple of times we had the statement that, well, we had a budget meeting. Well, you do have a budget meeting, but your budget meeting is at 10 o'clock in the morning and people who have jobs cannot come to a budget meeting. And what I propose is maybe y'all looking at having a budget workshop towards the end to where the citizens have a little bit more, you know what I'm saying, of where their tax dollars are going. Because right now, they're just walking in, getting the agenda, saying, "Where you have anything about the budget coming up?" But they really don't know what took place. They don't know what was moved from word to word. And I think there would be a budget workshop. I mean, y'all think about it. Put a budget workshop together towards the end of this process and just have a summary, "Hey, listen, we hired a police officer and this is what we paid, it's what it costs." I mean, I'm just talking about a summary, not a line by line, you know, because you do have work at 10 o'clock in the morning. And that's fine, but, you know, of course, I understand. But at the end, I think the citizens ought to have an idea of really what's going on at 10 o'clock in the morning. You know, that's just not the best time for anybody with a job, you know. Hey, I appreciate y'all. Appreciate y'all.
That's duly noted. Anyone else want to address the council?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Ken Schultz. I want to discuss with you some things about the county coming and asking the city for the property out there along the shore. I'm not in agreement with it. I think we... I've spoken to you and one or two of the other council members about it. And the property is too valuable for the city just to give away. It talks about the county making the old courthouse a museum and also, I think it's an event center. That's money I don't believe we're collecting any property taxes on. And we wouldn't be collecting any property taxes on the property if we were to give them to that. I think there's other options that they can look at that would be a little bit more feasible for them. We're in the process of trying to develop the old Hutch property and that property right there under the bridge along the river, I think, would also go along with that and make it a little bit more better for our city with income. You know, we talked about last week at the workshop about trying to sell or auction off a piece of property at Riverview to get some money. So I'm not in agreement with selling that property or giving it to the county. I think it could be better used where we could collect more property taxes from that and I wouldn't support any of you if y'all voted for that. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Ken. As mentioned at the workshop, Mayor Bradshaw has been given authority by County Commission to start negotiating those negotiations that haven't taken place yet, but thanks for your input on that. Anyone else address the council? Okay, we'll move on with our agenda. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes. I guess we'll take these separate of the regular meeting, May 20, 2019.
Attorney Brown, yes? Yeah, I reviewed these with Mr. Ford and they appear to be accurate.
Okay. Have a motion to approve the minutes for the regular meetings?
I have a motion.
Have a motion, have a second?
I'll take a moment.
Okay. Motion second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, okay. The special call meeting on May 30, 2019. Attorney Brown, those appear to be accurate as well?
I was not attending to that meeting, so I'll defer to the council members and make the motion approve.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Brewster. Motion been made to approve, have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Next item is fuel bids for January 3rd. Manager Ross, who would you?
Mr. Mayor, a bit of an oddity this month in that the low bidder was not the purchased fuel. We had a number of bids come in. The low bidder was Pilot Travel Centers. However, they were unable to deliver the fuel. They didn't have trucks available at the time who were below 500 gallons. So we went with the second highest bidder who was able to deliver the fuel. That was Rogers Petroleum at $1.86 unleaded and $1.88 diesel and a total of $15,000, $15.08.
Okay, you read all that note on there, just very minimal difference, just $30.
Just a penny, just a penny on regular, a couple pennies on this.
Okay, you hear the recommendation with the fuel bid? Have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the bid.
Okay, then you have a second?
Second.
Councilman Brewster, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Okay, next on second reading, ordinance of the city, Loudon, Tennessee, adopting the annual budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2019, ending June 30, 2020. And as discussed at the workshop, there are two additional employees in that budget along with a 2% increase, which is a policeman and skilled laborer.
I need to make a statement.
Okay.
Okay. I'm Tim Dixon. I would like to disclose that I have a personal interest in my son. He is currently an employee for the Loudon Utilities and will receive a pay increase along with all the city and utility employees covered by this plan. In no way does this affect my vote for this measure.
Councilman Dino?
Dino, but I'll say the statement. I have to disclose this is a personal interest for me. This will affect my household. However, this does not affect my ability to vote on this. It's an across-the-board 2% increase.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Bivens and Councilmember Dixon. Do you have a motion to pass this?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, do you have a motion? But Councilman Brewster, pass on second reading, do you have a second?
A second motion.
Councilman James, second. All those in favor, oh, we have to do a roll call.
Councilmember Brewster?
Aye.
Councilmember James?
Aye.
Councilmember Bivens?
Aye.
Councilmember Dixon?
Aye.
Mayor Harris?
Aye.
Ordinance passes on second reading. Next item for second reading is setting the tax rate for tax year 2019. Any questions or discussion on that? Not, I'll ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Have a second?
Second.
Do you have a motion and a second? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Dixon?
Aye.
Councilmember Brewster?
Aye.
Councilmember Bivens?
Aye.
Councilmember James?
Aye.
Mayor Harris?
Aye.
Next item for second reading is permitting the designation of handicap parking at or near the intersection of Grove Street and Warburg Street. We need discussion about this. If not, I'll entertain a motion?
Motion.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Okay. Councilmember Bivens made a motion and Brewster, second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bivens?
Aye.
Councilmember Brewster?
Aye.
Councilmember Brewster?
Aye.
Mayor Harris?
Aye.
Motion passed on second reading. Now we have an ordinance for first reading, which is amending the zoning map of the city of Loudon, Tennessee pursuant to 13-7-203 and 13-7-204 of the Tennessee code annotated to rezoned property located at River Road, tax map 040, parcel 072, approximately 132 acres from R1 low-density residential to R2 high-density residential district. Manager Ross, do you have anything to add to this?
This does come with the recommendation of the planning commission, which met this past week and approved the rezoning.
Okay. Any questions about this?
I have a question also. Is there an entrance and exit on River Road or is it just going to become an all-carding machine?
My recollection from the planning commission meeting is that this parcel, which is identified outlined in blue, will be joined with another parcel owned by the current owner and that the entrance to this future development will be from Carding Machine Road.
I would like to ask that we ask them to take a look into putting an entrance and exit on River Road. That's not a great area there on Carding Machine and it's already pre-populated. That's my only concern with this. I turn it up there. I mean, it touches River Road too, right? So...
This is a rezoning at this point, the subdivision and development would again return to this council for the council's approval. So a preliminary site plan would be available for review at that time and a portion comment and opinion.
Okay, this is the first step. It's a rezoning.
Well said, Mayor, it's not, this isn't the end. This is technically the beginning of this property's development.
I always keep that in mind, that comes with the rezoning end, because that's...
Travis, you can...
Which will come before the planning commission. It's already been discussed a little bit in the meeting that may solve that. They would like to see things like this discussed.
Okay, thanks for bringing that up, okay. I'm sure that... Okay, so any other discussion or questions? Not, I'll entertain a motion to approve this on first reading?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Dixon?
Aye.
Councilmember James?
Aye.
Councilmember Bivens?
Aye.
Councilmember Brewster?
Aye.
Mayor Harris?
Aye.
Let's set a public hearing for 6:25, please. That'll be on July 15. Okay, resolutions? Approving the lease agreement between Loudon Utilities and Loudon County. I think we've all seen that, put over it. Manager Ross, you have anything to add to what we have?
Well, Mayor Bradshaw has attended two of your meetings and briefed you on this upcoming transaction. The lease agreement is before you. Just some highlights for the public and the audience. This is the old city hall, the 201 townhouse place, as well as the utility headquarters. It is owned by the gas department of LUB. The key terms are as follows. It's a rental rate of $1 per square foot. Currently, the county occupies 287 square feet. Our Parks and Rec department is still housed in a portion of the structure. The lease does allow for expansion in the future should that, the occupancy of that space change. So there can be a maximum of 9,479 square feet should the parties agree to that. There is a $10,000 flat fee that will be paid for by the county to LUB to cover really the past two months of transition. There was a period of time when we shared the building. There was a period of time where we were not inconvenienced, but we were forced to move more quickly than we had originally planned. There were expenses associated with that and we agreed to a flat fee to cover it. The lease term is for one year, which shall automatically extend for a second year, after which either party may cancel 60 days' notice prior to the anniversary date of the lease. LUB shall maintain the building and the county shall be responsible for repairs not exceeding $500. LUB is not responsible for any pre-existing environmental conditions on the property.
Okay. It's good cooperation between the county and city to work out these. Attorney Brown, Attorney Bowman, did y'all work out them?
Yes, this has gone through several revisions.
Okay. Any questions about the lease agreement? Not, I'll ask for a motion to approve it?
Negative motion.
Councilmember Brewster made a motion, do you have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hey, motion carries. Amending the pay classification. Manager Ross?
The pay classification plan is required to be approved by the council. It includes all positions as well as their compensation. The plan before you has a 2% increase overall and has an addition of two personnel. One, a skilled laborer in the public works department. The second is the addition of a patrol officer in the police department. Since your last meeting, a small edit has taken place and that is the division of percentage of compensation paid to the city recorder slash treasurer, finance director. That is now three-quarters paid by LUB and 25% by the city.
Okay, have I noticed that change on that? Any questions regarding the pay classification plan? Okay, not, I'll ask for a motion?
Again, I need to state that the declaration of personal interest, the 2% increase will directly affect my household. It does not affect my vote, it's 2% acceptable.
I also need to disclose that I have a son-in-law who works for Loudon Utilities and he received a pay increase. That will not affect my vote.
Okay. Are those two declarations, do we have a motion to approve the pay plan?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Have a second?
Second.
Do you have a motion and a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay. Next item on the agenda is approving the subordination agreement with Douglas and Shanna Rucker. We discussed this at the workshop and I think Manager Ross has a little more input?
Yes, since the workshop, we did receive a attorney title opinion for the title insurance company representing the mortgage lender. And it revealed that the city is currently in second position. So by the Ruckers acquiring this new mortgage with Quicken Loans, the city's position will not change and we can therefore recommend execution of this ordination agreement.
Okay. Any questions about this? We discussed it at the workshop and I think this recent information cleared some things up. Do you have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do you have a motion, have a second? Okay, have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Department reports. Before the police chief starts, I'm going to just make a little bit of a report. A couple of months ago, we had, I think, Butch Thompson mentioned something about turkey vultures and black vultures and getting a permit. I went through that process, got the permit and for migratory bird permit, we didn't get that. I think Manager Ross has a copy of that, you got it in mail?
Yes, sir.
Chief Webb has submitted a report of action taken by the Loudon Police Department. So far, they've taken 25 black vultures and nine turkeys vultures. And they applied, they used the guidelines of permit and documented all that. So, police chief, if you have something else besides that, I'll entertain...
No, I just wanted to add, I think maybe that there might be a thought that this would be, something would be easy to do, just go down and shoot a bunch of turkey vultures. But the way the permit had set the regulations up for us to follow, we had to use a specific type of weapon, we had to use a specific type of ammunition. Couldn't use any ammunition that would hit a contaminant. And most everybody knows anything about firearms, projectiles are all lead. So we had to use steel buckshot with 12-gauge shotguns and that was to prevent, like I say, contamination, you know. Some of them, we wouldn't be able to recover them. We couldn't verify whether we killed them or not. They'd hit them. By the way, those old vultures are tough. I think that might be a saying that, you know, tough is a vulture. You'd shoot one and it'd fly off and you don't have to die or nothing. And as a matter of fact, we had one officer shot, one at the Hutch property. It flew off and landed down next to the boat ramp. We had to go down there and finish it off. Also, a restriction was what we were supposed to do. The terminology was take. We could take, so we... And so we had a certain way that we had to dispose of the bodies and it was either by effigy, I didn't know what that was until we went through this process and that was to display a dead body. And so the manager asked us not to do that and I didn't think it was a good idea to have dead turkey vultures hanging up all over the place. And so anyway, we either incinerate them or bury them. And so what we did, we worked with Public Works, Ellis Scruggs was kind enough to help us out and transfer them down to the landfill so they were properly disposed and buried. And I think that if you pay attention, you'll see there's not that many of them around. I'll just give you an example. When I come to work around 7 o'clock in the morning, you can go down there, those old water tower that are still standing down there and you'd have dozens of them down there. If you go down there around 7 o'clock in the morning right now, you're lucky if you see three or four of them. So I think that, you know, once we've not taken, perhaps we discourage the rest of them.
It is a very lengthy process. It took me all week basically working with the U.S. Wildlife and USDA and OCS. So as a five or six-page application we had to go through. You wouldn't think you'd have to go through all that, but they are protected. You can't just get rid of them. But they did advise us that this probably will be a long process. After this, will probably be some pyro technique stuff that we'll have to do to continue to scare them off. So, yeah. But it will be a process that we have to hear to and I'll have to file a report after conclusion of this, but didn't want to pass that long. We did take it serious and it's something we want to fix as well, so.
Did you not want to report anything on the bear?
Bear?
Most folks probably know we had a bear in the woods. I think, was it last Wednesday?
It was Wednesday, yes.
And of course, we, you know, we saw the bear, cop TWRA. TWRA says to get ready for this and probably will be more of this that happens. It's like a yearling, like a young male bear and they travel a lot and they come through your community and they just asked us to try to kind of scare it the best we could. What they asked us, use what we call less-than-lethal means to scare it, which are, we have shotgun ammunition that has bean bags and rubber pellets and so that's what we did. The day after it came through Loudon, it was Marble Bluff, the Polcat area that was last seen there. And then you probably saw on Channel 6 News, next day is over in Kensington. So we've gotten that one out of the community. I think we're safe as far as animals concerned. So if anybody does see a bear running loose in the city, let us know because we want to be sure of them and try to safely book him on out of the city.
It did run right in front of my vehicle, right in the pool. So I had to stop, not hit it.
He also visited Dennis Stewart, Jimmy Greenway's property too, this year.
Anything else, police chief? Webb?
No, sir, that's all I've got.
Okay. Chief Rebecca?
Mayor, just to remind you all about our Public Safety Summer Camp. It takes place July 23rd through 25th. We, our signs are kind of slow so far. We're having trouble. Our only advertising right now is through Facebook. I did talk to Chip before the meeting, we're going to put something on his station to give him more word out. But we're going to allow 25 kids ages 13 to 18 and we're hoping to fill it up and then have a successful capture on kids by the public safety and the community.
Okay, thank you. Got to start somewhere, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, public workers, Ellis?
He had to leave.
He had to leave?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Mark Harrell, recreation?
Yes, sir. Got a couple of things here. While we're talking about birds in migratory, thanks to Lee, I've been working for a couple of years trying to assist these to move on upriver or downriver. We've been real successful. Last year, we had some action, we had some model rockets, some rum and candles of those. So if anyone knows of any kind of inside or out layer...
Yeah, there's a process for that too. They've checked on that. We have to just go through the process.
I think it's, you know, even as well, we get a lot of complaints, they have complaints about these.
Yeah, there's about 30 down there, 25 or 30 now.
The county has made 125.
Oh, really?
And working a little bit, we're trying to scare them a little bit.
Eric, we just got a recent...
I'd also like to report, two weekends ago, we had, we were able to share the Smoky Mountain Seagrass with Loudon County. We had 17 teams scheduled to come here and play. It's an over 55 age softball tournament. The organization had 147 teams total. This year, they moved out as well and tried to play a couple of weekends in the air. We did not get to play just about every game of, I think, 140 of 147 teams went home without getting a field. I talked to some of the guys that went to Athens to play or try to play, the weather just kept them from playing. They were blessed and they were so excited about the way our guys took care of them coming at 4:00 that morning, you know, Saturday morning and working, building to try and get the fields ready for play and then now force it again. So to tell you guys, we got a great staff at Parks and Rec and I just really thank those guys for their commitment. Can't say enough what those folks do. They're hard. I think that each day they go out, they're committed and, you know, work and work. Of course, that's hard when you work that hard to do that much of the field and then rain it again. Smoky Mountain Classic will be back next year. They play somewhere just about every single weekend. Last year, when we had 27 states represented in the city of Loudon. But I think there's like 40 United States total represented in this organization. I think some players have answered as well. It's a great organization and we hope to get them back next year.
Okay.
Now, one other thing, I'm sorry. Fourth of July, Independence Day coming up. On the Fourth of July this year, in the past, we've done celebrate the Fourth on the Third or when I actually do it on the Fourth. Ethan Fitzpatrick's plan started at 6:00. He's got food, like Jimmy's possession. He has wonderful food, got something to see. France has food. Top notch, first-class food. And of course, we've completed 95 rolls, 29, 39, 45.
That's all the municipal part?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Coes and Porches, Travis, any questions? Director Brown?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Councilmember reports. Councilmember Bivens?
I believe at the next workshop, if all works well, the sanitation committee will be here, Loudon County's always, may be here to present. Where we are at with the contract with Santec at the moment. That is just a stakeholder review. You should be getting something if you haven't already. It'll be a letter describing it. So he's got that to be sent out. He sent a file back to us today, so. They'll be here to tell you all about the details of it because it's a lot of information in there. I'll just say that.
Only thing, Councilmember Bivens, for granted, certainly, this meeting, it's not a happy subject a lot of times.
But it's been very enlightening and it's actually pretty interesting. So Dennis is welcome. Anytime you want to pitch up.
Word of attention, autograph, please. Councilmember Brewster?
Ellis is not here, but be aware that paving is going to start in about 10 more days. Carding machines, Bernie.
Thank you. Anything else? Councilmember James, anything?
I'd just like to thank everybody for coming out tonight. I know several of y'all have been here for the last few meetings. It's good to see you take interest in what we're doing and I can assure you that it does It's good to see you take interest in what we're doing and I can assure you that it does make a difference. So keep coming, keep asking questions because y'all want to know, we need you to tell. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilman James. Last, Mayor Dixon?
Yeah, the historical commission we met and all it was, was Ford Nichols Building was getting painted and we had to approve it. So, because I seen the historical zone, the regional planning commission, we voted to amend that subdivision regulation to the fifty-foot road trunks and that subdivision there on River Road. And then we had a, well, that's one else on there. And the, on the utility side, AMI project's going good. They're on schedule, they're working overtime on Saturdays. And as far as the job bidding procedure goes that I talked about, we're still looking into that, still working with Jason and the department heads. We've all come together and want to put together some kind of plan, so maybe one of these days it'll be in the, be in the, in place.
Okay. All right, just a couple of things I have. I went to a census steering committee meeting on June the 10th. If anybody would like to, census is very important. It's coming up in 2020. It really helps our schools, our community. If you would like to participate with that, they're hiring. Thirteen fifty an hour, fifty-eight cents a mile. So I've got the information for that. If you know someone that's like to be, have a part-time job, they're 20 hours a week. So they're going to be really recruiting and would like to, like to talk to you about that. So I'll be happy to share that information. I went to the steering committee meeting and got a lot of information that I wasn't aware of. So it's, it's very important to our, our city and county to get accurate counts, census, census data. Second thing, don't forget the, this weekend is the Lyman rodeo up in Lenore City. Our, our guys are competing in that, I think. We got a team in it. So it's Friday and Saturday, 21st and 22nd up in Lenore City. I think the Teleco Park with the boat ramp, Tele.
Canal Boat Run.
Okay? Remember that? And I think that's all the reports. I do have some appointments to make. June is a, is a busy time to appoint. Some of these are just my appointments, some of them take city council approval. I'll start with just the ones that take my appointment to the Loudon Regional Planning Commission. I want to reappoint Salvador Fardina, Dennis Brennan. They're from the urban growth boundary. Their term will expire six thirty twenty-four. Then on the Loudon Regional Zoning Commission, Bob Richardson, reappoint him. That'll be a five-year term, six thirty twenty-four when that would expire. Then the Loudon Housing Authority, we had a resident there that's on that board, Tim Jenkins, he moved. So I've met with Ms. Virginia Houston, she's going to take his place. She's a resident there. So I'll appoint her to that board tonight as well. Some of the ones that take council consent is the Recreation Advisory Committee. I talked to Mark on this. Ray Simmons, I'd like to reappoint him, six thirty twenty-two is when his term would, would expire. Jessica Gammans, should be the same thing. And then Bob Tripp resigned and I'd like to recommend Buzz Hendrix for that. Does it, I talked to Mark about that, he's okay with that. So if the council's okay with those three, Ray Simmons, Buzz Hendrix and Jessica Gammans, I'd like to get council approval for that. I don't need a motion with his vote on it. All those in favor of approving those three, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, those three will be appointed. The next one is, is the Loudon County Beer Board. This really comes up in July, but to save you from having to do it at the meeting, we'll take care of it this month. Those are, the city council appoints those and approves them. So we'll need to take each one of these three names individually with a motion and a second and a vote. First one is Joe Moorfield. He has been on there for forty-something years. Said he was on there in 1973. So I did twist his arm, he agreed to serve one more term.
Make a motion.
Yes, I did a motion, okay. Big, big submit a motion and Brewster second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Joe will be tipped. The next one is John Lovis. He's been on there several years, I'm not sure how long, but a long time as well. So if the council approves of that, I'd like to have a motion for him.
I'm moving him.
Okay, thank you, Councilman James, second.
I'll second.
Okay, Councilman Dixon, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? The last one is Eddie McAllister, he's here as well. I'd like to nominate him, council's approval, so.
I'll make a motion, we. Wait, David?
I'll second.
Motion's second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you, council. Motion passed. The last one is our Loudon Utility Board. Here, I'll appoint with the consent of council, I don't need a motion and a second, we'll just have a vote. Gives me pleasure to nominate and appoint Chairman Dino Campbell for another term, which would expire six thirty twenty-three. So I'll reappoint him with the consent of council. So I'd like to ask, all those approved, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you, council. Sorry, Dino, back on. We're lucky to have you, we're lucky to have you. That's all I have. Manager Ross, you have anything? Were we skipped or missed?
Yes, sir, I believe that covers it.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, thank you. Meeting's adjourned.